Football field and would also like to have a prong and try to get as many things in there as we can. All that, of course, depends on the duration of the social distancing. We have some protocols in place in line with the state waivers as far as how we're grading and giving credit. Really not allowing anyone else in the building is not essential personnel, it's essential office typically, myself, Dr. Riggins, and Kevin Luck. Nobody else. James has been here with kind of a skeleton crew going through the things that we have to do like checking the freezers or checking the buildings for leaks or anything like that. Any questions in particular?
I'd just like to give a shout out to all of our teachers for the excellent job they're doing through all this. What they're doing is going beyond what they're hoping to appreciate them and their hard work during this time.
Yeah, we've got a lot of teachers reaching out to kids and it's been good. Interesting. No one else? All right, we'll move on to new business item A, consideration of construction management contract. I'm going to change order if that's okay because we have our Zoom setup with ESG. So if I could bump down to item C since we've got everybody plugged in right now. This is the, if you remember last month, Janelle and her team presented to the board their 90% review. Tonight is a 100% review. We met with them already via Zoom and there's not a lot of difference in it, which we didn't anticipate there being. So Janelle, I'm going to turn over to you right now and then I will tell you though, let me preface this, you all have at your table a copy of the guaranteed energy savings performance contract. You had one in your electronic packet. This is the one that reflects the changes that our attorney suggested. So this, this hard copy, and Mr. Beckett is here tonight as well to answer any questions about that. This hard copy reflects the changes in line with what our attorney suggested. And so you have that as a hard copy to look at and as soon as Janelle's done here, we'll open up for questions, any kind of specific questions you might have.
So I'm super excited to be here, especially under these circumstances. I'm really glad to leave. We're having today is the first time in a month, I think, first time I've left since we presented last time. So I'm super excited to be here. My team's going to be joining us by Zoom. But please don't feel like you have to wait until the presentation's over. If you have a question when we have that slide up, please feel free to ask your question and not have to hold it to the end. So I think you guys are going to be really pleased as Dr. Stevens said. This is a 100% review. Not a whole lot has changed. We were pretty spot on with a 90%. Maybe even let me have a little screen. So we use our agenda, we're going to list the scope. Again, it's very similar. We look at the financial a little bit deeper, it's going to be similar to what we saw last time, and then we'll discuss our future timeline. Is this bigger or better? Okay, so here's our team, apologize for that. We have Phil Mett, he's our corporate engineering manager. He's joining us by Zoom. And we have Jay Warner, he's our performance engineer. Dan Marsh, he's our senior project director for public finance. John Waddle, he's our project manager. And then Ross Akak, who's our lighting manager. That's who's all on the phone. So we have questions, surely one of those experts can answer. So this is, we've seen this again. So we're looking at lighting, HVAC controls, water conservation, same, same to go with last time. And then possibly, of course, phase two, we're looking at solar, additional HVAC upgrades, as well as possibly that could be lighting. So now I'm going to pass it on to Phil to go over our financials.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your time. I'd like to now mention the, this slide is very similar to what we presented at our 100% review. Basically, it's just an overview of damage conservation measures or the scope of work that we're going to be doing across the district. We also have by ECM, the savings and the price for each ECM. So just to think back, the reason you would do a program like this is to generate enough savings to pay for all the infrastructure improvements. And these savings is money that the district is already spending right now. It's just going to be redirected from the utility company or any other providers to help pay for the project. Hardly any of the numbers have changed on here. If they have, it's just been by a few dollar amounts. I would highlight the most significant saving stream is coming from the district-wide bi- retrofit we're going to be doing. We're going to be retrofitting over 5,000 fixtures with the latest LED technology. We are also getting some good savings from bringing in a district-wide controls. Currently, your school's already having an old antiquated Schneider controls that is largely non-functioning. But, so this control system will be applied to all HVAC units in the district as well as there's several walk-in coolers that are going to be monitored. The rest of the ECNs, they're pretty explanatory. The biggest one though that we're driving after and where we're applying the excess savings from the other ECNs is in the HVAC upgrades. We're going to be able to replace 76 of the air conditioning units at most of the buildings in the district. So really, the number that I'd like you to focus on is that we're generating 235, almost $236,000 of savings annually that will fund a $3.2 million project. So are there any questions about this slide?
No. I'm sorry. I moved you on. You ready to move on? You ready to go back?
No, go ahead. I believe this is, Jay is, I think this is your slide.
Well, so what's in front of you now, the chart or table that's on the left side demonstrates the first year savings. So you go down to the first two cells, first year utility savings, we show $183,000. And the first year of operations maintenance along with capital cost avoidance is $52,000. So in the next, next block are the costs of the annual lease payment is $225,000 and that'll be the same every year. First year of measurement verification comes in at a little over $10,000. But at year two, it drops down by over 50% and then that number escalates across the remaining 20 years. So we use a finance rate of 3.5% based on conversations, your, your financial team for total project cost about $3.2 million. But the table on the right side shows a cost and also a rebate that aren't included in the, in the annual cash flow or in the project. So the rebate from Entergy, again, we estimate that at about $150,000. We think it'll be more, but we won't know until, until we have a contract and we finish out the paperwork. So that $150,000 is a pretty conservative number and that's, those savings are going to be received, or that rebate will be received and installed throughout the construction period. That will be before our M&amp;B starts. And then that $626 cost is for the electrician control. So that's the, that's the middle tier of available options and it equates to $2 per ton of fat per year. So at $626 a year on this, it's pretty minimal cost, but that is above and beyond this project. Janelle, do you have some next slide discussion?
Yes, I'd just like to add one thing regarding the rebates in there. That comes directly from the results. So it'll go straight from clear results to the block of the school district's check made out of us. Doesn't even go through equipment, go through us at all.
So in front of you now is the total 20-year cash flow. And depending on what the projected screen looks like, these may be a bunch of really small blurry numbers, might not be the easiest to read, but I'll still go through them. So the first block is just the year and in what period it is. So the second block where it says positive cash flow, so those are your annual energy savings along with annual operation savings and capital cost avoidance, respectively the first, second, and third column. The fourth column is that rebate and you can see that's ingrained in that construction period, that's the $150,000. In the next block or pink block, you have your lease payment first. The middle row that says support services, so that's our M&amp;B, M&amp;B cost. So you can see year one, it's a little over $10,000, but like I said, year two, it drops down to four and then escalates throughout the remaining 20 years. So the last four columns in blue where, under where it says project summary. So focus on the last, very last two columns. Second last that says project cash flow, that's annually how much cash flow is in this project. So those are your savings every year from year one on to year 20. So one of our requirements is that we're positive every year and in year one, we made it a little over $300 positive. And then year two, it jumps up to $12,000 positive after all payments. And again, that is, that's a result of that M&amp;B cost being reduced from years two through 20. The last column that says cumulative project cash flow, so that's kind of a running, running path of, of how much, how much your total savings are throughout the years as it, as it compounds throughout the year. Our next slide, please, Janelle.
Does anyone have any questions on that?
So this is a total, this is 20-year term, this is the total financial summary. So the total positive cash flow is just over 6.1 million. So you take, that's the energy savings accumulated over 20 years along with the operations and capital cost avoidance. The column to the right, total cost is just lease payment and support services, those are your total payments over 20 years. So when you do the, do the short math in front of the numbers, the project as a whole is roughly $1.5 million positive cash flow at, at the end of, end of 20 years. And that 1.5 also does not reflect the $150,000 we accounted for in rebates. So you can add that 150 on top of that, whatever the 150 happens to actually come in at. So just project cost, not including rebates, is 1.5 million positive at the end of 20 years. Do you have any, anybody have any questions on that? Okay, I'll turn it back over to Janelle. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. So we, you've heard our future timeline. So we're hoping this contract will be signed by April 23rd and then we'll have our potential construction kickoff meeting. So we're super excited. We know that these timelines are really close together, but we're doing that in, in hopes that we can meet the goal of trying to get as much done during the summer as possible. So trying to stick to these construction deadlines because, you know, if we miss finally, it's going to move the project back a bit. So these are just some timelines we've got out there to try to keep this on track and get as much done throughout the summer as we can. And so next on, unless there's any questions, I'll turn it over to Phil to go over our intended construction schedule. Okay, Phil?
Yeah, so if you look at the top left-hand corner there, you see the same date Janelle was showing you, the April 23rd is the contract sign date. This is a summary by ECN of when we think we'll get started and finish up the construction activities. I just really want to remind you that the start dates are contingent upon the contract sign date. So if the contract doesn't sign on the 23rd and it gets signed a week or two weeks later, all of these dates, you get pushed over to the right, that same amount. But assuming that it does get signed there on the 23rd, then towards the end of May, we'll be getting subcontracts out to our subcontractors, ordering the materials and getting them on their way for the construction process. I do want to point out, it looks like most of the crafts will be starting kind of in the middle of June. The exception of that will be our lighting team, which is our own ESG lighting team. Then we'll get to start sometime around probably the first part of April. And that's going to allow them to get all the lighting done in the summertime as well as everything else that ECNs that we're going to be providing will also conclude before school goes back into session next fall. With the exception of the HVAC, which is very labor intensive and we're doing a large number of units and it will likely, most likely roll into the school year slightly. But we won't leave any school rooms unconditioned. They'll, they'll be serviced by the unit that is there now. And we'll just move our construction and swapping out of that to the second standard for weekends to accommodate, make sure that classrooms are comfortable. Then finally, there'll be a period of where we're doing some commissioning, punchless items and working towards getting the project finalized. And we think that's going to occur probably towards the end of November. Are any questions? So this is a little more regular detail. This is what we use to build out the summaries slide that I showed you briefly before. We don't need to enter any detail here. I just wanted to let you know that we really have this down to every ECM and on a school by school basis. It's not rigid. If there's activities going on, we'll work very closely with district staff to move our construction activities around so that we're not, don't have any detrimental effect on the normal district activities during this timeframe. So Janelle, unless there's questions, you can just go through the next slide and, next two slides actually, because it's just more of the same.
I have one question.
Sure.
He mentioned your lighting team start April 1st while we dealt our before contract signing. Is that misspoken?
You did say, mentioned April for the lighting.
We're not able to hear them at all, Janelle, so you'll have to repeat the question.
He said during your present, during the last slide, when we were talking about the timeline and the lighting, I think you might have misspoke, you said April 1st and we said we, we wouldn't be able to speak, we wouldn't be able to start till the contract signing. But we'll be able to do the lighting first because that's our internal lighting.
But he maybe you'd start May 1st or June 1st?
Are you thinking May 1st? When do you think we can start? Ross, when do you think we can start on the lighting? We have a lighting agenda on the clock. Ross?
Yeah, he had it on there before May, but I think he said the beginning of April lighting to avoid confusion there.
Yeah. So when do you think you can start, May?
Yeah, it'll be May.
Any other questions? We want to make sure everyone has plenty of opportunity to ask questions. So does anyone have any more questions, or really anything?
So like we talked about earlier this week, Dr. Stevens on the contract, there's still a couple of things that I believe should be added and that's a retainage, a 10% retainage to guarantee that the work is going to be completed and that we have a little bit of leverage on that. I think that's going to be key. They're going to put retainage on their contractors, so I believe we should be putting it on them. The construction schedule in point nine, the delays, again, there is nothing saying that if they delay the process according to their construction schedule, we have nothing to, to hold against them. So I think that needs to be reciprocal on the delays and I also think in that, there needs to be written notice prior to, and that way something could be arranged without causing the delay. I think that's going to be really key in making sure that we have a little bit of leverage. And of course, every contract is written to get leverage to them, so we got to push it back a little bit. So retainage of 10%, I think is a must. The construction schedule, what if they don't get that? And that goes into the delays. If we delay them, they may be delaying us. We've got to have something reciprocal.
I defer that to Jay because he's going to have a better understanding than I am.
Yeah, those are good comments. I think the first comment, the retainage, I've got a language that we can propose on that. The second comment, we can, we can basically follow the digits like a, like a, have almost like a notice provision and also like a liquidated damages provision. Correct. If they don't, you know, perform any kind of effect.
Correct.
So we can propose some language tomorrow to them. Okay. And run by the other seats.
I'd be great.
And get it, get that through.
Good, thank you.
I think you also had a comment about the seat resolution piece. There is no arbitration provision in the agreement. The agreement implies that there would be, let's see, in section 12.7, it talks about the remedies and it just says, you know, either party can go to court to enforce the contract that's the other party. That's what, that's what I always want. I don't want arbitration. I want, you know, court. And since the contract's being, you know, performed in Arkansas, we're in Arkansas.
That's the only thing, because I wasn't for sure where they were based and I didn't want, if any arbitration happened, I didn't want it to happen in Wisconsin.
Right. It'll be in Arkansas because the contract's being signed in Arkansas, implemented in Arkansas with the Arkansas School District and they're an Indian company, but they have an operation in Arkansas, so it'll have to be in Arkansas.
Thank you. You bet. Any other questions? Well, what I would like to do then is propose, is make a motion that the board, requesting the board to approve this contract with the amendments that our attorney just spoke about to be completed and inserted in the contract. Jay, is that typical standard protocol for something like that?
Yes.
Have you guys reviewed the, the modifications to the contract?
I haven't seen none.
Your attorney has.
Oh, the ones that you sent last week. Okay. I know there are some new ones.
And they were okay with that?
They accepted all our documents.
If they're okay with those indemnifications, they're going to be, they're going to be fine with the rest of this.
I understand. Those are all very reasonable. Yeah, we'll, we'll get language to your attorney, or I'll get language to Dr. Stevens. He'll get it to your side and it was like your background. You responded very timely the last time we had a conference.
We're very excited about this project moving forward. So I guess our legal team has been in the industry for a very long time, Holly.
We're going, we'll make sure we're positioned to sign by the 5th, 23rd.
Great, that's great. That's awesome. We're super excited. On a personal note, I watched the video, bring it up again because it really touched on her. I have a senior that goes to Fayetteville High School and I have a daughter that graduated last year, so I know what, how special it was for her. And I was just, I watched her leadership video and it brought tears to my eyes. So it's just nice to work for a school district to be a part, play my small part for a school district that really cares about and is passionate about their kids and that can be done. So I'm glad to be working with this team. We appreciate it.
So my recommendation is for the board to approve the contract with amendments included that our attorney has presented. So.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve the contract with those amendments. Is there anything else? If not, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're ready to go back to item A.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Janelle. So item A, consideration of construction management contract. All right, so we, construction management contract. You all have a copy of that. I will, yeah, thank you, on your electronic packet, you have a copy of that. I spoke with Mike Armstrong. Their attorney has not finished yet reviewing our attorney responses. There were two items on there, I think, that they wanted to look at a little bit closer. Jay and I have talked about that. We don't anticipate there being any issue with that, but we don't have a finalized contract. So this motion, my recommendation for this will be the same as the previous one, that we would approve the contract with the amendments suggested by our attorney inserted.
Someone?
Jay, do you have a copy of what your, what your suggestions were?
Yeah, it's, we have, by the way, we've, we've reviewed many of nabols, consider you with nabols?
Yes.
Okay. What's your general counsel's name?
Andrea Woods.
Yeah, Andrea Woods. I've worked with Andrea many times. She's been there in-house counseled for many years and we've never had a, had a problem working out, you know, our comments to the contracts that protect school districts. And there's, we've got like three or four pages of really detailed comments that modify the standard American Institute of Architects, you know, construction contract documents. And we never had an issue working with Andrea to get those finalized into our satisfaction. So, you know, we'll work with them on those. But they, they range from, you know, making sure that the contractor, the construction managers comply with bidding laws. We, we select litigation in Faulkner County Circuit Court as the means of resolving any disputes. We require certifications from the construction manager and we just have, you know, just have a whole, I mean, I could go through the.
I just emailed you all, I just emailed that Jay's email has a document with all the recommendations on it.
Yeah.
So you all should have that in your email.
Is my letter of April lighting bid? Yes.
Yep.
Yeah. Bids, construction manager certifications, surveys, compensation, changes in the work, dispute resolution, modifications, conflicts of interest, indemnifications, those are just topic areas. I understated it. It's actually a six-page letter. So we have a lot of different comments on, on the form documents.
Okay, I heard a motion. Do we have a second on that? So about, we got a motion and a second to approve that with the contingent on the amendments. Is there any other discussion?
This is just to select them, but not voting on what their contract or their bid, right?
Yes, this is just how the contract with the construction manager will work. And then the next step is they will be soliciting bids. And then the next step is they will be soliciting, uh, bids and providing a list of bidders, uh, so that if anyone on the board wants to add a company that's not represented there, we can do that. So that'll be the next step after this.
And so at that time, if we have a question on the contract, we can ask it then.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item B is consideration of the architect contract. Uh, same, same project, uh, same, uh, document form. Uh, I know that Jay has worked with Steve's firm on many contracts, and so they have come up with a contract that is agreeable to both. Uh, I do not have a final copy of that because they're still in the process of working up those things. Uh, the different things that you'll be adding, Steve, uh, based on what Jay's saying, just some specifics. And so again, the same, uh, same recommendation, approve the architect contract as presented with additions, uh, from our council. So, all right, motion, second, to approve that. Is there any other discussion? If not, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And then we'll move to item D, consideration of ASBA policy proposal. Jay, thank you, Steve. Mike, thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, so, uh, the part, the, uh, agenda says section three and eight, uh, I'm going to table eight until the main meeting. Uh, section eight are classified staff policies, section three is certified staff policies. These are similar to the policies y'all approved last month, so I'm just going to kind of walk through them like we did last time. And if y'all have any questions, uh, if you can stop me, if there's any you want to be pulled out to be acted on separately at a table, uh, we can do that as well. So, okay? Okay, so we start with, uh, policy three point four, uh, standards of accreditation was amended to say standards for accreditation, Arabic numerals are added, um, and, uh, they just changed the formatting on it. Three point seven, licensed personnel bus driver drug testing, you're going to have this same policy next month in section eight. It's just our, uh, personnel, our bus driver drug testing policy, and it's in section three because we have teachers that drive buses. So, uh, this policy was updated to incorporate the requirements, uh, the FMCSA drug and alcohol clearinghouse, uh, originally released in October twenty nineteen. Uh, so if you remember, I think it was at our November meeting, when we approved some, uh, changes to this policy to reflect that new, uh, drug and alcohol clearinghouse recommendations. Uh, changes that made the original, the release to clarify the employees' license requirements to be hired. And so if you look through there, uh, on scope of policy, uh, the correction there says the employee shall possess a current driver's license authorizing the individual to operate the size of a bus the individual is being hired to drive. So it just gives more specific, specificity to, to those requirements. Uh, and then if you look on, uh, the fifth page of the policy, they just changed the, uh, the notation to reflect that, specifics as to why that change was made. Three point two one, licensed personnel use of tobacco, uh, electronic nicotine delivery systems, systems and related products. Title was changed to include electronic nicotine delivery systems and related products. Three point two five, uh, licensed personnel grievances, it gives a def, it gives, uh, added definitions there, uh, also to alphabetize, it's a formatting thing to alphabetize the definitions, add Arabic numerals when necessary, and to rewrite some portions to make the parenthetical comment into actual body text, all formatting. Policy three point three two, licensed personnel family medical leave, language is added to allow for, uh, discipling an employee who is determined to abuse fraud. Uh, in addition, the language for districts with fewer than fifteen employees is moved, that doesn't, um, apply to us. Three point three six, licensed personnel dismissal and non-renewal, uh, a reference to tests, uh, which is the evaluation, uh, protocol utilized for certified staff, uh, that are not administrators, uh, was corrected and a legal reference was pluralized. Three point four oh, licensed personnel duties as mandated reporters, uh, they just changed some languages there, uh, to allow for reports to the malt treatment hotline, dealing with non-emergency reports of malt treatment, uh, to be reported by fax in addition to a phone call. Now that is, uh, in the first bullet there. And three point five four, last one, teaching during planning period and/or a more than maximum number of students per day. If you remember, this is a policy that came in a, like, a while back, that, uh, a teacher can voluntarily give up their planning period of the teacher class, but we're obligated to pay them for that. Or they can voluntarily teach more than a maximum number of students per day, but we have to pay them a pro-rated amount for those students. So this change in the policy, uh, was updated to have language more closely match amendments to the DESI rules. So if you look in the first main paragraph, it clarifies unless a course being taught is one that meets the definition of a course that lends itself to large group instruction. Uh, and that is an example of a PE class. A PE class does not fall under those same parameters of a student maximum, because that is a class that's designed to have more kids in it. So that's why that language is. Any questions about any of those? Okay, if there are no questions, I'd like to ask the board to approve the section three ASBA policy proposals as presented.
So, Jay?
All right, motion, second, to approve those policy proposals. Any other discussion? If not, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is personnel. Does any board member have any need to go to executive session? No? Okay, Dr. Stevens, go ahead. Okay. Uh, we have the following resignations, Lockie Vaughn, uh, Roxanne Russenberger, one of our custodians is retiring, Dale Sowell, a custodian is retiring, Sandra Dixon retiring, Sharon Alexander, a secretary retiring, and Hawkins Hudson, uh, middle school literacy teacher
So, second.
All right, motion, second, to approve those resignations. For those in favor, would you say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You have anything other, person else? Um, I may have here, I'm trying to think of the motion that we made. The motion for the ESG performance contracting, I would like to amend that to where it also states pending acquisition of appropriate financing.
Did we do that already last time?
Uh, no. But, uh, I, but, so, but I, I am asking the board to amend the previous action, uh, vote on the ESG contract to include pending, uh, pending receipt of appropriate financing. That's, that's, I mean, Jack and I are meeting about that tomorrow, we've already got that lined up, but I, in case something goes south in our economy, I want to make sure we have that in there.
So, did, I thought we already approved all that when those bonds were sold.
Now, those bonds were sold just to refinance those bonds, they had nothing to do with the ESG contract. Contingent, a big part of the ESG contract is that we should be able to get financing that is covered by our savings, so we're not out any extra capital. So I just want to put that contingency in a motion that it's also pending receipt of So moves?
Thank you.
All right, motion, second, to approve that amendment. Uh, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, Stevens, do you have any other business? Any board members want business? If not, we'll turn to me. Evan, thanks for getting everything set up, and Steve? Mr. McNue, thank you.